Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council Meeting for Monday, June 2nd. I will call this meeting in order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hawbaker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Christman.
Thank you, everybody. We'll now look for a motion for the approval of the minutes for May 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've got no special presentations for this evening, so we will now move to public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. If there is an item later in the agenda that you'd like to speak on, well, please wait for that item. So this is for anything that's not on the agenda for specific items. So, yep. Just name an address, please.
Gabe Grohhouse, Homeway Drive, Cedar Falls. Integrity is doing the right thing when no one is looking, and I would also add to that that courage is doing the right thing when everyone is looking. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm here to ask for your support in the referendum we're working on, on collecting signatures for. This is not the first time our city has had this discussion. It's gone on for a while, and I've been trying to gather information on where it started. I'll just share a brief history of what I've learned. It looks like in 2020, there was a discussion about making the mayor position part-time and having the manager form a government, but no action was taken. 2017, the same discussion came up, and no action was taken. It's been interesting. If you look at comments of past mayors, well, Mayor Green was in office. He said the role needed to be full-time, but once out of office, he clarified it wasn't necessary. It could be part-time. Mayor Jim Brown, during the 2017 discussion, said the position needed to stay full-time, but now he's under the impression it could be part-time. Former council member Dave Sires, when he was running for mayor, said it needed to be full-time, and depending when you ask him, if he's running for mayor, it still needs to be full-time, but if he's not, then it can be part-time. Don't look out the windows. Pigs aren't flying, but Dave Sires, Rob Green, and Jim Brown agree on something. The mayor position could be part-time. As far as I can see, it was 1987. John Cruz decided he wanted to be a full-time mayor, but he still needed help. He relied heavily on one of his directors, Dick McAllister, who was running city administration services. The role was called city administrator, and this was created to help oversee some of the other directors. In 2015, Mr. McAllister retired, and a city engineer took over, Ron Gaines. It's been 10 years now, and this role has changed some, and a lot of powers have been granted. I think there'll probably be case studies written someday about the powers of administrator in Cedar Falls, but I think our city is ready to move in another direction, in a more positive direction. You know, I've talked to different people around town, and many have said they would be here tonight. They would like to speak in front of you, but they're worried there might be pushback on their business or their causes if they come and speak. That attitude really saddens me, and Cedar Falls, there should be no pushback for someone wanting to come and speak before you. You should be able to speak your mind to anyone in the city and not have fear of being discriminated against or have your business boycotted or blocked in different areas. You know, as I've been collecting signatures, I hear a question. The first question I often hear is, what does the mayor think of this? Does the mayor support this? And then, what does my council member think of this? Do they support this? And it's kind of a hard answer to give. I've heard mixed messages from different ones of you sitting up there, and so what I'm asking for tonight is your support. Would you support this petition? Would you tell people publicly with the cameras rolling, with the lights on, would you tell them that you're in favor of moving to this new form of government? It's used in almost every other city across the state. I know there's council agenda update tonight. That's a time when any of you can update us on anything that you want to, and you can share your opinion to the public. They're watching. They want to know what you think about this. We all know leadership isn't tested when choices are simple. It's tested when the stakes are high, and it's tested when there's hard decisions to be made. So I'm asking you to make those decisions tonight. Would you share your support publicly? You know, I stand here not just as a resident of this community, but someone who deeply believes in what local government can be when there is a clear sense of right and wrong, when there's courage from a body of elected officials. I'll say it again. Integrity is doing the right thing when no one is looking, but it takes courage to do the right thing when everyone is looking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grohhouse. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? Yep. Just name an address, please.
Dennis Pruckler, 2221 Center Street, Cedar Falls. I've got a few handouts tonight. The first one is just newspaper news headlines about a whitewater project in Dallas that went bad, all the problems they had. The main point on that, though, is that Dallas decided to bail out, bite the bullet, spend the money to get rid of it, and is adopting a plan very similar to what we almost have here. It actually has a lot of similarities with Vienna Park that I had mentioned two weeks ago, that they built on their island. The third page is just an example of environmentally sound ways of doing recreation park and working with the river that Army Corps advocates. It's informational. My main point tonight is, the middle page, it's just examples of what they are planning to do in Dallas now that they're building a $300 million park in place of the, I think it costs like $6 million to build and then tear out their whitewater park, but they're doing a comprehensive park that ties the community together, that bike trails lead into, and it becomes a center point, and they're developing it in the floodplain. Why I'm using that as an example is on the backside of there is a map of the waterways we have and could have, and we almost have that park that Dallas is hoping to build. We already have bike trails from all over the community funneling into the Big Woods Lake, George With, Black Hawk Park trail systems, even Hartman Reserve, Pfeiffer Springs Park. Those all are part of what could be a unified park. That's one continuous park connected by bicycle trails. Part of my plan, my proposal is that we build the waterways on the side channels that are right now disconnected from the cedar and create a water trail system that connects these parks, too. And we could have a water trail system going from Black Hawk Park Campground all the way to George With Campground, theoretically even beyond that, off-river, which is much more desirable than on-river bike trails. It's quieter. There's birds and wildlife. What would happen here with this plan is if we open up a channel at Island Park, it would feed water into the back channels. It also would give us flood protection by adding a second river channel, which is what Vienna did. I fear the plan that they do have, that we do have right now for Phase II Whitewater Park would cause more flooding. By my calculations, Island Park would be underwater roughly a third of a typical summer if built as depicted in the current Phase II plan that's available. We would have no floodgates. If that plan is even partially implemented and the dam is reduced in level, the floodgates are taken out, we would have no option in the future of filling those side-channel waterways. There's other research the Army Corps of Engineers has done. They looked at their three main reservoirs that the Army Corps manages, Red Rock, Salerville, and I think Coralville, and those three reservoirs reduce nitrate output from Iowa by 8%. And they weren't even built to do that, but just having that reservoir in hydroic soils in the flatlands at the upper ends does that. Little-known fact, we have an underground reservoir here under the Cedar River side channels, the size of Lake Red Rock. It's just, it's built in. But we have, I guess, the plan I'm talking about. If we maintain the floodgates, we actually have a reservoir that could fill water on top of that underground reservoir, and we could be adding to the nitrate reduction that probably comparable, maybe even more, than is achieved by any of the three major Army Corps projects. So I hope we don't build that whitewater park, the second phase.
Thank you, Mr. Pruckler.
Sure.
Anyone else for public comment this evening? Name an address, please.
Chad Welsh, 6701 Strayer Road. Good evening, council. I am here tonight because I am being subjected to what I believe is deeply unfair and selective enforcement interpretation of Iowa Code 20.3 subsection 476, specifically requiring to separate electric services and meters. I want to be crystal clear. I understand the importance of safety and code compliance, but I also understand how to read a statute, and I'm asking the city to do the same and apply it fairly. Iowa Code 20.3 subsection 476 states, "Electric electricity delivered to separately rented or owned units within a building must be individually metered except in circumstances." Let's go through them because this matters. One, where electricity is used in centralized heating, cooling, water heating, or ventilation systems. Two, where a facility is designated for elderly or handicapped persons. Three, where sub-metering or resale service was permitted prior to 1966. Number four, where individual metering is impractical. Under the last clause, impractical, the law gives two very specific definitions. If the conditions or structural barriers exist that separating meters is unsafe or physically impossible, or if the cost of individual metering exceeds the long-term benefits. Now, my property doesn't qualify under all these exceptions, but it does qualify for the first one, as electricity is used for centralized water heating, and under the fourth, because the cost of separation of the electric service clearly exceeds the long-term benefit. I met with Annie, Ron, Stephanie, Jamie, Jeff, Karen, and Thomas last week. I was explaining that I do not qualify for the first exception because how they interpret the code is that the meter should be for the common space and separate meters for the divided units. However, as I stated previously, these are exceptions are for when properties need to be individually metered, except when. How does an exception turn into additional metering be required? Their interpretation makes absolutely zero sense. Now, another final clause, the cost of individual metering exceeds the long-term benefits. I have the numbers. Infrastructure overhaul will be massive, cutting into walls, rewiring the entire building, trenching new conduit, updating panels and meter bank, coordinating with CFU for new service lines. The cost of tens of thousands of dollars, and the return, virtually nothing. It's a paper exercise that changes nothing for the tenants, nothing for safety, and nothing for reliability. City staff told me they don't think my project justifies the exception before asking for any information on the cost, and I just believe the construction cost of my project should be none of the city's business. They decided on the number that the project upgrade cost for electrical has to be 50% of the project costs or greater. I don't know how we landed on that number. Seems like an exorbitantly high number, but here's where the frustration really begins. I was explaining that a neighboring property, a similar multi-unit commercial space, was allowed to keep shared service and meter setup with a remodel and separation of spaces, and when I asked the City of Cedar Falls why, I was given frankly bizarre reasons. The businesses are similar use with an open floor plan. The businesses are owned by brothers. A case study was submitted by the state of Iowa, and an agreement was signed by the brothers with the city. Literally, none of these reasons are allowed in the code as exceptions, and also, I found the owner of that property, and I talked to him. He has no brother. He is unaware of any case study being sent to the state. He has no known agreement signed with the city. So either the city staff was misled, or worse, the story was just made up to justify letting one property escape by penalizing me. That's not just unfair. That's a liability. So I'm asking the city council tonight to launch an immediate review of the code enforcement decisions related to Code, Iowa Code 20.3 subsection 476, not as a part of retaliation of other property owners, but to ensure I and other property owners are getting equal interpretation and enforcement going forward. And I ask that they review the interpretation of the Iowa code. Requiring additional metering in a section where the code explicitly states separating meters is not required is a far stretch of interpretation. And finally, I want an established and transparent and written process for applying for exemptions under the impracticality clause, one that includes documentation, cost analysis, and an appeal process, not stories of vague excuses that do not meet any exceptions per the Iowa code. Again, I am not here to dodge the code. I am here because I follow the code, and the code allows for exceptions when water heating is centralized or separation is impractical. Well, it is, and I refuse to be penalized for not having a brother in the next unit or an imaginary case study or an agreement with the city. If the City of Cedar Falls wants to enforce this code, they must do so consistently, accurately, and lawfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. And just because I mentioned I wanted to speak to, we did sit down for a meeting to review the project. There was a difference in opinion on how it's interpreted from Mr. Welsh's side and from staff. We settled on, it is a state law. It is not our local law in ordinance. It is a state law that is the issue with, can't respond this. So I just want to speak to that meeting, and we did then say that, well, then, as a state law, we want to get the state's opinion and judgment, because from my understanding, the opinion of staff is based on past experiences of having had similar situations and having asked for the state's interpretation of that code. So being a state law, when I sat in on this meeting, I decided at this point, if there's a difference of interpretation between resident and city staff, we're going to go ask the state to give us a judgment on what is their interpretation of what the law's intent was, because it sounds like how it's written is maybe not accurate to the intent behind what the law was, and I don't, we have not had a follow-up on that, I believe. We also provided the contact to Mr. Welsh to be able to follow up directly himself, and then knowing we will eventually need to follow up with the state to get that feedback, but wanted to let him be able to have that conversation with the state to get the feedback. So I just wanted to give that clarification for that meeting, that that is still pending. We haven't had the follow-up from getting the state's feedback on that, and we are waiting to see what the state would say in this specific circumstance. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Just name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Manning. I live at 2908 West Third Street in Cedar Falls. Just a question, Mr. Mayor, the previous presentation in the committee, the whole, talked about a substantial redo of the water treatment facility and adding some additional stuff. Is there any chance that we're not too far down the road where that could be relocated somewhere else? I mean, that's a valuable piece of property in downtown Cedar Falls, and perhaps I'm too late on bringing it up, and if so, I don't want to cause additional expense, but I was just curious if that was a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say we can follow up with the afterwards and talk through. It is something that had been reviewed a lot in the past. I know in the previous study, but we can get that information and touch base with you.
Great.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to staff updates. I know we've got a few here. Stephanie, if you'd like to jump in?
Sure. Just wanted to remind everybody about Saturday, the celebrating the grand opening of the Gateway River Park will be on Saturday, June 7th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. We will be over at the Gateway Park Shelter, and there will be a ribbon cutting that starts right away at 1:00, and then there will be a lot of different family-friendly activities and just some informal information about and tours of the river project.
Thank you. And it does look like weather might be iffy this weekend, but we'll have updates out. So I believe the Gateway Park River Park Facebook page will have updates on the event and...
Way too early to call it yet.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, we're not calling it. Still planning to be there, but just in case. Keep an eye on the Facebook page, and we'll also have information on our city website. Then Director Shragi, had an update?
Sure. Just wanted to provide a brief update regarding the Main Street reconstruction project. You're all aware, this is year three of three of the project. They're currently focusing on the intersection of 18th and Main. We've really tried to allow the contractor to work outside of the limits of Main Street, but at some point, the closure of Main Street needs to take place for the building of the roundabout. They have indicated today that they will be moving forward with that as early as next week. So this is just a reminder, as of next week, Main Street will be closed for north-south and the east-west traffic on 18th Street as well. And we are looking at the reopening to traffic towards the end of August of this year.
Thank you, Director. And I'd say in advance, thank you to the community. I know one more closure, and we'll have this road wrapped up. So just appreciate everyone with the patience and working with everybody for making traffic work around there. So, any other staff updates? All right, we'll move on to special order of business. Item number two, public hearing to consider entering into an agreement for private development with Lawn City LLC. Is there a motion received and file approved publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then we have staff comments. We've got Shane Graham. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council tonight is a development agreement with Lawn City LLC. At 315 Main Street, it's the former Scratch Cup Cakery Building on Main Street. That building's been vacant now for several years now. The current plan is to invest approximately $1 million into the 5,500-square-foot space, which will include a new kitchen, four to five bathroom stalls, for the purpose of creating a new event and banquet center with a projected occupancy of 175 people. The project should be wrapped up here by the end of this year, and per our agreements, this is just your standard agreement in the downtown area, which allows for a 10-year tax rebate on the increased valuation that the project adds. So it won't affect the current valuation and the current taxes on it, just the increased valuation that this project has.
Thank you, Shane. Any clarifying questions, Mr. Graham, at this time?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I dare to mention the P-word, but what does 175 attendees do to parking downtown? Do we have any, I mean, they don't need any restrictions or any additional parking because of the business type. Is that correct?
Yeah, but I think that's correct.
Okay.
And it will play into, thankfully, we will have a parking discussion coming up here. So this is a good addition, I think, to downtown, but it does, you're right, lend to that discussion around parking. Are any additional qualifying or clarifying questions this time? All right, thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
We will now look for any public comments on this item tonight. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for motion and resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for private development with Lawn City LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
I think, Mr. Mayor, there is concern there. I think it isn't for this project, but not requiring any parking and not having parking for commercial usage has always been a problem. So I just want to make sure that we keep a keen eye on that, obviously knowing that there's conversation coming up. That'll be good, but 175 additional attendees colliding on downtown, I guess I'm curious on the timeline. I think it said that it could be done within this year. I like the addition, but that's a huge concern.
Great. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussions, questions from council?
Well, you know, I don't have a crystal ball either, and I share those concerns. I think this would be a great addition for downtown, and also envision that people that are attending, it won't be, you know, just likely thinking, not 175 individuals, you wouldn't think. And also, it would be a draw for the hotels, and so a lot of folks would be parking at the hotels and walking from there or getting transport. So, you know, it is, it's a risk, but I think that the reward outweighs the risk of this.
Thank you, counselor. Any other thoughts from council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number three, public hearing on the fiscal year 26 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant, CDPG, and Home Consortium. Do motion receive and file approved publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then for staff comments, we've got Melissa. Thank you, Melissa.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Melissa Denning, Community Services Supervisor. The Community Development Department with the assistance of Intercog has prepared a draft fiscal year Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, otherwise known as the AAP, because that's quite a mouthful. For the city's fiscal year 26, federal fiscal year 2025, Cedar Falls has received an allocation of $278,127. So that's an increase from what I had initially told you in the memo. I hadn't received the allocation from HUD when I had to submit to council. So we had $262,000 this year, and we're up to $278,000 next year. So that's good news. The first of two public hearings was held at the regularly scheduled housing committee, commission meeting, rather, on April 16th at 4:00 p.m., and they recommended that the plan move forward for council approval. Our five-year consolidated plan was adopted in 2025. You might remember that process, and the projects listed in our fiscal year 2026 Annual Action Plan that is presented tonight, those are aligned with our consolidated plan, which is a HUD requirement. The proposed projects meet HUD national objectives and serve low-to-moderate income areas or individuals, and proposed projects include sanitary sewer lining projects, a park enhancement of ADA-compliant restrooms at Sealy Park, the planting of street trees, owner-occupied and Section 8 tenant-occupied rehabilitation projects, and support for local human service agencies who provide services that support housing initiatives. So with the money that we are being allocated, we tend to do some really good things this year. So it's my hope that you will have reviewed the plan and that you will recommend the approval of it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Any clarifying questions from Melissa at this time? Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if the sidewalk discussion that we had, I want to say Dallas Street several months ago, where we didn't approve the sidewalk under, I thought, this program. several months ago, where we didn't approve the sidewalk under, I thought, this program. Did we relocate that money then to something else that we could utilize that?
So because under our proposed infrastructure projects, we keep it pretty broad. Sidewalks, sidewalk infill is one project that we could do. And according to our consolidated plan, every other year, we're going to try to do sidewalk infill projects. The opposite years, we will do the sanitary sewer lining. So this year, moving forward, we'll be able to use some of those funds to be able to do extra sanitary sewer lining projects, as well as the park enhancement at Cerly Park.
So is some of this money then coming from the Dallas sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that project did not move forward, the funds are still in that category, and they'll just kind of move into the next year.
We didn't lose them.
We did not lose them at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to any public comment on this item tonight. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for motion on a resolution approving the fiscal year 2026 annual action plan for community development block grant and home consortium.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any council discussion? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move on to that motion carries. Item number four, public hearing on a proposed amendment to the land use map for Green Hill Village by changing the designation from medium-density residential use to low-density residential use for property located east of Norris Drive, north of Addison Drive, and west of Lauren Drive. Do we have motion received and file approved publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then for staff comments tonight, we have JD. Thank you, JD.
Good evening, Council. So this is a case for amending the future land use map from medium-density residential to low-density residential. I have an image up on the screen here. The subject property, as highlighted by a hatch, is about 5.22 acres, where currently the area is in the medium-density residential use as per the future comp plan. What medium-density residential is, allows density between 4 to 12 units per acre and emphasizes development of variety of housing types. Whereas the yellow, which is the low-density residential use, emphasizes single-family detached unit development and density between 1 to 4 units per acre. The applicant here is requesting an amendment to change the designation of the prop, the subject property, from medium-density to low-density residential use to allow for development of a single-family detached, detached single-family development, which will be about 16 units or spread it across 5.2 acres. The current master plan for this area is, allows multi-unit townhome development, about 7.7 units per acre. With this change, needs to be aligned with the future land use map, which is why this proposal is here. In the next slide, you could see, this is the detailed shot of what the property is. Again, this will facilitate development of 16 detached, single-family dwelling unit at a density of 3.07 units per acre. We believe this is aligning with other low-density residential uses in this neighborhood and also is consistent with the other single-family homes just south of this subject property. With that, we recommend approval of this master, sorry, future land use map amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, JD. Any clarifying questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thanks for the presentation. I was kind of confused, or maybe I don't understand the R1, 2, 3, and 4 zoning, but when you have a medium density, you can only build medium density. You can't do low automatically, just like in an R3 or an R4. You could build a duplex. Is that, doesn't correlate the same in this carryout?
Sure. I think this is because this is an MU zone, which is a mixed-use zoning district. We have a MU district master plan that was developed back in 98 for this whole area. In that master plan, this area was designated to be developed as a medium density, which aligned with the master plan, which is why it was approved. Currently, what they are doing is developing lesser than what is allowed, which is why this change needs to happen.
Sure. I understand the mechanics of it, but my thinking is that medium density and less could be built automatically, or is it the case, Karen shaking her head, no, that?
No.
When you say medium, it's got to be medium. You can't do a three-unit, that's why we're changing it.
Yes, that's correct, because medium is between 4 to 10 units per acre.
It's not, it's not the same as R3 or R4 where you can build a duplex, or at least that's my understanding.
Correct. This is the future land use map, so you need to build consistent with that. And what you're pointing to is zoning, where there are specific provisions in a zoning district that you could do a duplex, for example, or a single-family home.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, JD. Any other clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for any public comment on this item tonight. Also seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on the resolution approving an amendment to the future land use map for Green Hill Village by changing designation from medium-density residential use to low-density residential use for property located east of Norris Drive, north of Addison Drive, and west of Lauren Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council?
Appreciate the clarification. I had the same question as Daryl did, so.
Thank you, Counselors. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. We'll move to item number five, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a mixed-use residential zoning district development procedures agreement with GHV Holdings LLC and approving an MU district master plan amendment relative to a detached, single-family residential development. And this is the contingent item of that previous public hearing. Do we have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and open for any council discussion? All right, seeing none, any public discussion on this item tonight? Was that, did you have some? Also seeing none, bring it back. Was there any council discussion for it? Okay. All right, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The item carries. Item number six, public hearing on a proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2025 sidewalk assessment project Zone 7. Do we have a motion received and file approved publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then for staff comments tonight, we've got Ben Claypool. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As mentioned, tonight's public hearing is on the 2025 sidewalk assessment project for Zone 7. This project involves the replacement of deficient sidewalk adjacent to various property owners. And this project will replace the deficient sidewalk for the adjacent property owner and assess the cost of replacement to said property owners. The Department of Justice has set requirements for communities to keep sidewalks compliant with ADA standards. To stay in compliance, the city performs an annual sidewalk assessment on one of 10 previously established zones. Zone 7 is the location of this year's assessment project and generally includes everything south of 27th Street and west of the line created by South Main and 2758. This zone was walked in the spring of '24, and each property owner has now received three individual notices for their deficiencies, once in May, another in August of last year, and then a last one this March. This public hearing is for all of the properties that have not elected to have their panels corrected by a private contractor already. Once the replacement has been completed, the Engineering Division will submit a bill to the city clerk. The clerk will then send notices of the bill in the mail to the adjacent property owners, and the owners will then have 30 days to pay the bill without interest or penalty. And if the adjacent property owner fails to pay the bill in 30 days, the costs of the replacement will be applied to the property owner's property taxes. The total estimated cost for the construction of this project is $162,763.15. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any clarifying questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Claypool, on the 6-inch versus 4-inch, is that just replacing the existing? And do we require it to be 6-inch, or could they have gone to 4-inch if they're replacing 6?
With the replacement, it is to 6-inch. Or, sorry, no, I am mistaken on that. The replacement is for, it's 6-inch in certain locations, such as driveways, approaches.
Driveway approach, okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open it up for any public comment on this item tonight. Also seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion on the resolution approving and adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2025 sidewalk assessment project Zone 7.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. We'll move to item number seven, a public hearing on a proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Union Road culvert replacement project. Do we have motion received and file approved publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then for staff comments, again, we've got Mr. Claypool. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. This project involves the replacement of the existing reinforced box culvert with a newer and larger reinforced concrete box culvert. It includes the grading, the paving, and the extension of the sanitary sewer from the box culvert north to the intersection of West 27th Street. In this image, north being the right side of the screen oriented that way. This project will provide the necessary improvements for the culvert as it crosses the west branch of Dry Run Creek, and the sanitary sewer extension will allow for more connectivity to the city's sanitary sewer system while also setting up access for future development, more towards the north end. The total estimated cost for the construction of this project is approximately $1,150,000 and will be funded by the Local Option Sales Tax and Sanitary Sewer Rental Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any clarifying questions this time?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. Mr. Claypool, 1.5 million or 1.15?
1.15. I understand there may be some confusion in that. It's my understanding that there was an addendum issued shortly after this was first submitted to council for PSNE, and there was a reduction in the cost with that, down to the 1.15.
Thank you for clarifying.
Appreciate it, Counselor. Any additional clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, appreciate it, Ben. Any public comment on this item tonight? Also seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for motion on the resolution approving and adopting the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Union Road culvert replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Move to old business. Item number eight, pass ordinance number 3110, amending Chapter 26, zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to swimming pool regulations upon its third and final consideration. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. Item number nine, pass ordinance number 3111, amending Chapter 10, garbage and refuse of the Code of Ordinances relative to service charges established and unsanitary accumulations, unsightly trash, refuse, yard waste, oil or grease recycling containers or dumpsters upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please. No one even looked up at me. It just, everyone's like, okay, we got other things to work on.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to the consent calendar. So the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that it be considered separately. Are there any requests from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Item number 12?
Item number 12. Any others from council?
Number 13.
13? Any others from council? I've seen none. Any from the public? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve items 10 through 16 of the consent calendar excluding items number 12 and 13.
So moved.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. We'll move to item number 12, a motion to approve the following recommendations of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. We've got three for the Parks and Rest Commission, and then one for the Utility Board of Trustees for CFU as well. So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor?
I just wanted to thank Jim, Leslie, Kelsey, and Deb for volunteering. All these folks were previously on these commissions or boards, and so they're volunteering their time again, so that's greatly appreciated. If anyone here or watching, or watching in the future, is interested in participating in a board or commission, you can go to the city's website, click on Government, and then click on Boards and Commissions, and the application can be found there. We have at least 19 boards and commissions, and currently, there are vacancies on, sorry, the Board of Adjustment, Electric Appeals, Rental Housing, Community Center, and Senior Services Board, Housing Commission, Library Board of Trustees, and the Tourism Board. So there's a lot of options, a lot of interests available. So if you want to take some time to volunteer, we'd love to have you.
Thank you, Counselor, and I will second that. We genuinely do have some open positions, and anything like the work we do requires a lot of community input. So we encourage people, if any of those have interest to you, please don't hesitate to reach out, even if it's just to learn more about what those positions are. So thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from council?
Only is Jim, or Leslie, or Kelsey, or Deborah here?
Yeah, there is one here. Mind if we call you out, Deb? So we do have Deb Eel here. So second term, I believe, on the CFU board. For those of you that don't know, that is a six-year term. So there's a longer commitment, and there's a lot to learn in that position. So having somebody really able to step in on that and take that extra time. There's workshops, trainings to go to, so appreciate all the time you put in. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Deb, if you would like to get up and give a speech at this point, you are more than welcome to. All right, next time. All right, seeing none from the public, all those, excuse me, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Move to item number 13, do we look for a motion to approve the application of J&amp;M Displays, Inc., Sturgis Falls, for a fireworks display permit for June 26, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and open?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to call this one out. It's a little bit of a bigger and better celebration than last year, so expressing appreciation for the facilitation with the university and the mayor's office to get this back last year. And this is a bigger and better production, looking toward next year as the nation's 250th celebration. I would appreciate a solid bigger and better again next year. But I also wanted to just call out that we're getting an additional, I want to show the value on it. I have the numbers in front of me, but we're getting a $30,000 display, and they're throwing in an additional, I believe it's like 30% in bonus because of our facilitation and engagement with them. So if you are in public and love fireworks, come to this celebration at the Dome. Softball fields, I think, soccer fields.
Soccer fields, yeah.
This is in there. Anyway, it's going to be a fantastic time to kick off Sturgis again this year.
Thank you, Counselor, and again, appreciate council's support of doing this event again. And we did increase the budget this year. We're looking for a few more sponsors. So if anyone's out there and looking to get involved, this is a great community event. Last year went amazing, had some really good feedback with the community and looking to continue building on that, so going forward. And again, a big thank you to you and I. They put a lot of time in on the logistics on this, setting everything up, managing the fields. They're doing some extra work this year on making sure there will be some potential golf carts to take people to the restrooms since they are located a little ways away if families need to stop over there. So just a thank you to them for helping out with the logistics again this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I thought that the people that are so inclined to shoot off lots of fireworks that might not be during the approved times can donate to this and have their share of legal fireworks going off in the air and enjoy it with everybody else.
I love that idea.
Yeah.
We'll pass around the collection.
There you go.
Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All seeing none, requires a voice vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. We will now move to the resolution calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that an item be considered separately. Are there any from council?
32.
Thirty, 32 you said?
I think it's 31, yeah, 32.
32, any others from council? I'm going to pull 23.
Did someone say 23?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I beat you to it. All right, any others from council? All right, or any from the public? All right, seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve items 17 through 43 of the resolution calendar excluding items number 23 and 32.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am clerk, we'll move to item 23, look for a motion, resolution, rescinding resolution number 23964 related to dates of allowed fireworks use and resolution designating July 3rd, 5th, and December 31st, 2025 as additional days of allowed use of consumer fireworks within city limits.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and I wanted to pull this one quick because I know there's been some community conversation with this. This is really because the state legislator did just recently pass new legislation requiring that we as a city must allow fireworks on July 3rd. If you remember, previously, we had approved July 4th, which was required, and then added on that July 5th date, the Friday and Saturday, so now we need to go back and change that to allow for the 3rd based on that state legislation. Again, legally required for us to put that in, and so this is really just a follow-up to some of the legislative change in allowing that Thursday, July 3rd. There is also, and doesn't relate for the July 4th weekend, but we also must allow for December 31st based on that state legislation, so it's including that as well.
So my question, I guess, for Attorney Rogers maybe is, so we've had this discussion over the years, okay, what about, it's on a Wednesday, and what about the following weekend, the pre, the weekend ahead? Do we have a discussion on that, or these are the days? It's the 3rd, 4th, and the 5th?
I'll put it this way, Councilmember Schultz, the minimum is July 3rd, July 4th, December 31st. We can go further than that should we choose to, within the window of the June to July and December timeframes. So the state legislature is saying to cities, you must allow at least these days for use, but you can add more, or not, if you choose not to.
Does that help answer it, councillor?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Attorney Rogers, yep.
Yeah, I had reached out to Attorney Rogers earlier this week as well for some explanation because the ordinance, the local ordinance will need to change, and that'll come subsequent to this, but this resolution change is really to get compliant, and then Director Birdy, perhaps you could speak to the compliance that we've gained by allowing that Saturday usage. I know Chief Howard had mentioned the numbers improved as far as what we were getting for violations called in, so to keep that Saturday in there per our initial discussion, I think is advisable. We've seen better compliance in those off-window times. If somebody's going to want to shoot off fireworks and we give them an allowable window, they'll shoot them within that window instead of whenever they darn well please, which includes March, and April, and June 1st, and June 13th, and June 12th. So this is helping us to gain compliance to provide our residents a little more peace. I've heard from a couple residents, again, that, you know, this is a problem, and outlawing it in general should be the recommended way to go, but that does not gain compliance. People that, I mean, laws don't fix behaviors, people fix behaviors, so being neighborly is probably a good way to ask your neighbors to not do it, but I, I'll give you the opportunity, Director Birdy, to speak to that gained compliance that we've seen on Saturday usage.
Yeah, well, I would agree with exactly what you said. You know, through the years, the more restrictive we are, there's going to be use of fireworks, it's hard to enforce, you can't control the hours, and it seems like we've had good compliance when we allow, you know, a couple days or a few days to shoot fireworks, it seems like they come to an end properly that evening, and we have plenty of people out there, you know, doing enforcement and looking for violations, so we always like the idea of having an appropriate window around a weekend when you could best guess that people would want to use fireworks. But kind of like Gil said earlier, also, if it's the middle of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, then as a body, we just need to figure out what's best for our community.
Thank you, Director.
Mr. Mayor, I may.
Yep, go ahead.
But as I understand it, I mean, the law that passed isn't related to when those days happen, right? As far as weekends or anything like that, it's the, and you cannot restrict them on July 3rd, 4th, and December 31st, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and that could be Monday and Tuesday?
Could be.
Right.
We're, I don't want to say stuck with those dates, but those are the dates the state legislature has indicated we shall allow the use.
Right, and the resolution that was pulled, obviously, we have to do the 3rd and the 4th, but I see the 5th we're adding in there, right?
That was consistent with what council decided previously, so we kept that on there. Now that was not mandatory.
Right, so that required is the 3rd, 4th, and the 31st?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we did coordinate with the city of Waterloo that they are planning to have the same, because they had kind of done the same, they were planning the 4th and 5th, now they have to amend it to add the 3rd, so they're also planning to go with the 3rd, 4th, and 5th, and the 31st.
And we added the 5th for this year because it ended on a Sat, or it's a Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, originally, we went with the Friday, Saturday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
And Director Birdy, just confirming, like, I honestly don't recall, the 11:00 PM for the 4th and 5th versus the 10:00 PM on the 3rd? That was consistent with what we recommended previously, is that accurate?
Correct, it's what was recommended, but it's also required by law.
Correct. It would be a lot easier for us if they were.
Sure.
Ending time was the same, but unfortunately, no.
And consistent then, obviously, with what Waterloo's doing, based on the rule of the legislature.
Any other discussion, questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Many of us may remember last year during the Fourth of the Day celebration, we had considerable concerns from people about a war zone out there, and I had been in favor of sticking to the July 4th because of the concerns I've heard from many. So I guess, for that reason, I'm going to vote no on this because we're adding to what the state mandates, even though it is a Saturday, and the concerns or the compliance seems to be better, as Director Birdy explained, the 3rd and the 4th should be sufficient, the 3rd is a night into the holiday weekend, stay up late, shoot them up, and so on and so on, so I'm going to be voting no on this because of that, adding the 5th.
Thank you, councillor.
I like fireworks, though, but I'm doing what my constituents have said. Thank you.
Anything about what you said earlier, if anyone would like to donate their money instead of buying fireworks to the city show?
That's right, I reiterate that.
We will gladly accept it.
Danny will take your money instead of shooting off your own?
Yeah.
And he'll funnel it to the right source. Thank you.
So any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
For voting aye to voting nay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am clerk, the motion carries. Move to item number 32, a resolution approving and adopting the residential septic to sanitary sewer conversion policy, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and councillor?
Yes, thank you. I'm kind of curious, through this discussion that we had, that was instigated with the South Main project, and we came up with this provisions here for eligibility and so on. There's a mention in here in the applicability, it's actually page 343, if a licensed plumber, Black Hawk County Sanitarium, or other agent with professional expertise in the operation and condition assessment of septic systems deems the property's septic system to be in a condition of disrepair. So are we allowed to, are citizens allowed to repair their septics? If there is a sufficient leach field area, the ground can percolate properly, tree roots grew into the septic distribution network, they're allowed to repair? Is that what I'm understanding? Or is this precluding the ability to provide maintenance for your system? And what's the definition of maintenance versus total disrepair or unreplaceable? Or can you build a new one if you have sufficient lot size? That's my concern.
I think maybe confusing two different topics, specific to the South Main topic. All septics are reviewed by the Black Hawk County Health Department, and they'll work with a plumber to dictate if it's not functioning properly, if it needs repaired. If there's a septic system that's not in an area that we've previously discussed, like the South Main, or if it's on the northern end of town, they currently have a septic system, they're looking to repair it, and there's no city sewer within a half a mile, and they'd like to replace the septic, they're more than happy to do so and work with the county to get that done. As it relates to the South Main project, we've previously discussed that at the committee meeting, that they do have the ability to repair it to a certain extent. If the county health department comes in and dictates that it needs a complete replacement, that would dictate that they need to connect to the sewer at the time.
If they're within 200 feet?
Correct.
If they're not within 200 feet, then they can rebuild and totally.
That is correct.
Start new, okay.
Yep, so this is just for houses that are served by city sewer within a certain range?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so correct me if I'm wrong, really, all we're doing here, Director Shraggy, we gave this program kind of as an incentive, looking at that South Main project, but this is just to be consistent, when and if we were ever to look at a different area in town, just because we can't set, we can't offer one, maybe set of incentives for one area, or maybe incentive isn't the right word, but for one area and then not in another, so that's really why we're seeing this before us now, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. Mayor, for me, and I think that's, I mean, that was, I'm not sure who wrote this, but that was specifically stated in the purpose of, it's the residential, you know, it's a sewer conversion policy, says this policy was written to establish guidelines detailing in what manner the city would assist residential property owners when transitioning from a private septic system to city sewer. So it's not forcing anything, it's just being fair, since those offers were made, I think, along South Main to anybody else that wants to convert down the road. So I'm in favor.
Thank you, councillor.
Another question, excuse me, scenario Sue, scenario two of the key provisions, it says up to $5,000 reimbursed if the property connects within 20 years. Could we put an inflation factor in that so that as the years go by, 20 years from now, $5,000 might pay for the backhoe to show up? I mean, that would be reasonable.
I think the intent of the policy is, we're going to start with this, and then if something changes over the next five years, I mean, we can always bring it back to revise it if numbers.
It could be good right now to add an inflation clause, if that would be possible, Mr. Rogers?
Certainly can, if you wish. The beauty of a resolution like this is it takes one reading, can be adjusted as we go forward if council feels it necessary, and bring it back and amend that, but it's council's decision if you want to add a, we have to be careful about amending on the fly here, so we want to be exactly specific about what the escalator would be, and then we can amend it and go with it.
So if we said the standard cost of living based on the CPI?
So there's like eight CPIs, not kidding, so we have to be very specific about that, not saying we can't do it, we can.
Well, I, we're talking about it, there's no reason to wait a couple years and then find out that $5,000 isn't sufficient. We just heard from a speaker during the committee presentation that the septic, or the sanitary sewer inflation rate was dramatically more than standard inflation. You know, the price of eggs may be excluded, but I think we should incorporate rates of inflation in there.
So you're looking to make a motion to amend?
Well, make a motion to amend one of Kevin Rogers' favorite CPI index based on eight that choose from?
I'll defer to the finance director on that.
So, yeah, I mean, I know, like, I'll pick our union contracts, it says right in the union contract, CPI Midwest CPIU for the past 12 months preceding May 1st. I mean, it's very specific about which one we use for the union contract, so I think that's what Kevin was getting to, was being very specific about which CPI it is, because just like you said, there are specific CPIs too, like there could be healthcare CPI, you know, so I think, you know, I will say generally, we tend to use the CPIU, Midwest CPIU, that tends to be what we use, or the overall CPIU, and then usually, what's, at what point in time are you doing it? I mean, is it as of January 1st you're going to do it, is it the 12-month average of January 1 to January 1, so, I mean, if.
Well.
I think to make it easy, I would probably just say, if you wanted to make it easy, the Midwest, or the overall CPIU, and either pick a day, January 1st, or say 12 months preceding January 1st, you know, I think that's the easiest, is just use the overall CPI.
So you're making that motion then?
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to give you some suggestions.
Okay, I will.
I'd like to make a comment first, so, or.
If you were to feel that, Darryl, because he has.
I was just going to make the motion to accept.
Go ahead.
The overall CPIU as Director Rodenbeck had mentioned, as the inflation component of scenario two, effective 12 months from July 1st.
To be. To be adjusted annually?
Annually. So each July 1st, we would readjust it to, based on the last 12-month CPI for that. Okay, that, we have that motion, unless anyone need clarification on the motion? The motion, is there a second for that?
A second for discussion.
Motion seconded, so open for discussion on the amendment to add just the CPI inflation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I think I'm in line with Attorney Rogers that amending on the fly is a little bit tricky, but I'm curious for construction seasons and things of that nature if we'd want to go with either a rolling 12 from the date of application for the reimbursement, or a little bit earlier in the season so they know what they're planning for, for that upcoming construction season when they might want to be digging in the mud.
Right.
A rolling 12 from the date of application for reimbursement might be.
Oh, I don't.
My preferred, I don't know, Jen, do you have a thought on that?
I just want to make sure what you're saying, so I think what you're saying is for each individual, it might be different, is that what you're saying? Because if they put their application in September, we're going to use the rolling 12 months for the next September, but if the next person wanted to do it in December, or put their application.
Be more messy, wouldn't it?
Maybe because it's individualized at that point?
And if they hook up in year 19, are we going to go back and run it all the way forward over those years? We'd have to clarify that, too.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councillor? You good?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
He recognized.
Okay, I thought you were done, my bad.
Go ahead, councillor.
This has just proved to your point, the difficulty of these amendments on the fly. It's not just as easy as saying, let's attach it to something, so I say we move forward as it is now, and then if we want to tweak it later with a little more investigation and thought into it, then we absolutely can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
My thought, or my question to Jen, I guess, would be, is this unique, or should we apply this to other situations that we have that, hey, well, the money's going to change on these other ordinances or these other resolutions, so.
I wouldn't say we have a lot of it in our code of ordinances, now we do have it as relates to council salaries, we have it in there, but I wouldn't say we have a lot in our ordinance CPI. I think sometimes maybe what the challenge is, is that when you do that, are there people who are frustrated, like, gosh, I got $5,000 this year, if I would have just waited another year, I would have got $5,100? I don't know if that, that might be something you want to think about, now, maybe, I think everyone understands Councilman Cruz's point, that things do change. I think for staff, we could also just kind of have it on our tickler, that if we feel like things are really changing, which is maybe what some are indicating, I mean, we can sure come back with a resolution and say, hey, you know, for the past five years, we feel like $5,000 isn't $5,000, so we want to review this policy. I mean, we could sure do that. I know that's no guarantee, though, I understand that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to my own amendment, to change the date to be January 1st, 2027, which will give a whole construction season to. January 1st, 2027, which will give a whole construction season to Counselor Gannfield's comment there. I think that's appropriate. If we want to put a tickler in the city's tickler file, whatever you want to call it, that's kind of subjective, and it's just as easy to put this in there. The CPI index that Director Rodenbeck mentioned is very specific. It's used for union contracts. There's really not much of a debate on that. It's used widely through our documents there. I don't know why we should not incorporate that now. We're just making more work down the road, unless Mr. Rogers finds something that's, you know, you say on the fly. I think we beat it up pretty good here, didn't we?
Did a pretty darn good job of it. The other thing I'd say is, I, I think this has constructed this number, I don't know where the number came from, it's not my deal, but for, for folks who might take advantage of it right away, so we kind of know what our outlay is right now. And as we go in the future, if people take advantage of it or not, I mean, maybe the incentive isn't enough to draw interest, we don't know yet. And so it could be adjusted for that reason, too. And I'm not trying to talk council out of it in that minute at all.
Well, I think, to your point, that someone who knows that next year the CPI is going to be higher based on what's happened in the economic environment, or it might go down, I guess, it's possible to go down. But I've never been involved in any construction projects that have gone down a whole lot. So I think, though, to be fair to the citizens, there should be a CPI built into that. I hope somebody would consider, everybody would consider that.
So, right now.
Oh, go ahead. Can I have one more comment on that? I, I think we're confusing things. You know, the idea is, none of this has to happen. I mean, this is just an inducement that was put together in hopes of moving South Main along. I think it's smart that we want to move as many people off septic as possible. So understand that in the scenarios that are listed that are part of this resolution, it's up to $5,000 reimbursement. It's not, we're going to pay for your costs, okay? And so that inducement is going to be there at $5,000. If we want to change it to be higher a few years from now, to, to either further incentivize people to switch, that would be fine. But I think it's, it's incorrect to assume that this is the city saying that, you know, we want to shoulder all the costs. It's simply just an incentive package to induce people to do it.
Right.
So I say stick it at 5. We don't have to attach it to inflation, because that's not the purpose of that 5 grand.
Okay. So if I can recap quick, we've got the motion amended, amendment to the motion to change it to allow the CPI, $5,000 plus the CPI, using the overall CPIU. On a rolling 12-month basis, that'll be calculated every January 1st, if we'll take the friendly amendment.
Yeah.
And I think he mentioned January 1st, 2027. I think would be the first time that adjustment would happen.
We got a year and.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion on?
I don't know that you have a second for it yet.
We.
Friendly amendment, okay. Never mind. I know if you needed a second on the friendly amendment, I stand corrected.
So we've got a motion seconded, and any other discussion on the amendment to add that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
See, so that would have been 3-3. So that motion does not carry. So we go back to the original motion of just the $5,000. So any further discussion on the original item? Resolution approving and adopting the residential septic to sanitary sewer conversion policy. Seeing no further discussion from council, any from the public? Seeing none from the public, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That moves us to bills and claims. So we have a motion to allow bills and claims for June 2nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? And any from the public? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That moves us to any council updates and/or announcements.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I think I would, crafting on the fly is always dangerous, but to the gentleman's comments earlier tonight, I just wanted to make sure that people know that there is some ongoing desire from some members of the council to look at our form of government. I have a petition myself and getting some signatures for it, but to the extent that we let the people decide what they want to do, but we don't, as a body, have enough information yet on what the different form of governments might look like. But there is initiative, and I've heard from a lot of members of the public, that want to at least have that opportunity at a referendum. So I would say, stay tuned, that there is some conversation happening, and that there are signatures being added to that petition for that initiative. And I've learned that there may be an option for this body to learn more about those forms of government and make a motion to put it to a referendum. So as those things may come up, that would be a good opportunity for the citizenry to stay engaged, so that they can have their voices heard at the ballot box.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other council updates and/or announcements? All right. Seeing none, any council referrals?
Mr. Mayor.
Submitted in writing, any pressing?
So I had made a referral for ordinance to be drafted for the side-by-side usage. The discussion we had, I think we had a very good discussion. Rusty Easton put together a very good packet of information for us. More discussion that I've had with my constituents and other people from, from the city, don't, they want to be respectful of Birdy's time and Chief Howard's time, and not sure what we would gain from that presentation, or taking another couple of months to come to an ordinance. So I'd like to see us move forward with drafting an ordinance and putting it on for, for vote.
So I know this isn't, so it's already something we've been referred. Councilmember Schultz is really just asking, the referral was to have staff bring back a presentation on the discussion, to be able to give information, to then make a decision on if we have council move, or, excuse me, staff move forward with drafting that. No, he did bring it up to me, just some wanting to say, okay, instead of just having staff come with the presentation, do we just want to give direction to come with the ordinance drafted for approval? I do think, just because I know council member brought it up while we're here, is there, is there a second to want to just discuss?
I'd second it.
So, open for discussion, just on the idea of just changing up that kind of referral to, instead of having staff bring it back a presentation, just wanting to see the actual written ordinance come back.
Sure. And, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I don't know that it counts as pressing, per se, for an urgent matter that was brought up tonight, but I think that's irrelevant, given that, I know council member Dunn would always be one, one to be cognizant of staff time, and if we need to have a committee meeting crafted for this, we could use that time for other things. So I'd be in favor of moving this forward. We seemed to be in decent consensus. So drafting the ordinance and evaluating that as an ordinance item, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep.
You know, I, I mean, they already had examples of other ordinances, right?
Correct, yeah.
Not reinventing the wheel, or?
No.
Okay.
And the state law is pretty clear.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually very much echo what Councilmember Schultz is saying. I thought the presentation and the information that we'd received was, was pretty robust. I don't know that there's additional information that staff would necessarily be able to bring forward that we haven't already maybe seen in front of us. We can certainly have a discussion on the, on the ordinance at the time that it's presented to us, but I don't know that we need an additional presentation and then see the ordinance thereafter. So from my end, I'm completely in support of what Gil's recommending.
Kind of front load of the presentation, didn't we?
Little bit.
Okay.
So, question from Mr. Rogers. Do you have sufficient information to go forward with what Council Schultz is saying? Kind of skip forward to draft the ordinance, or do you want?
There are a few considerations. Exactly what type of vehicle? What safety equipment, if any, is council going to require? The exact areas that would be covered by it? Council hasn't, if this is a good idea, would council consider other areas at the same time when we draft the ordinance? It's the law, and so, from my seat, I would like direction from council on those matters before I draft it for you. So you know how I am about.
Sure.
Amending on the fly.
You're saying you want to have another committee meeting?
I, I'd appreciate the direction from council.
And then listing of your things where you just.
So I would, sorry, Daryl. The questions you asked were in that information. The boundary was set, the safety equipment was set, the, the vehicle was identified. Those questions were already in that packet.
I'll give you an example. The, the vehicle identified does not exist under state law, and so there's, there's some, there's some discussion that needs to be had. Now, if, if council's comfortable going through the ordinance as presented and picking and choosing, that's fine, but it feels like that there's some information that wasn't fully shared on what the state requirements are or aren't, and exactly what vehicles would be subject to this ordinance change. There is, the city has an ATV ordinance, and it could or could not include UTVs, and so there's some, there's some technical details of this that need to be worked out, so that we want to get it right the first time. So, and I'm not trying to delay it, I mean, as soon as council's ready for it, I mean, go for it. Be, sure be nice to have a list of things and council can say up or down.
Okay. So I, again, I don't see those questions being necessarily addressed during a presentation that you have a specific, if you have a specific, maybe you and I and the UTV committee could get together, and that would help answer some of the questions that you have.
I'm happy to do it, however, council wishes to proceed with it.
Because I would take it as if, if you wanted to move forward with just having it cut back as a resolution or an ordinance change, we're ready to go. We'd probably need to have some of those meetings without the body's direction to try and gauge what that is, and just try to bring it back based on those conversations. So I think it's really a conversation for this group of, do you want us to just try and take our best shot at getting that right, or do you want us to have a chance? Because then if it comes back as an ordinance change, we're kind of in that spot where.
Right.
We are amending it on the fly, and there's no way we're amending this on the fly.
So I saw some heads going, yeah, if, if Gil and Attorney Rogers and, and the committee get together.
Happy to do it.
Okay. Let's do that.
And I think, I think it would still come back as a, as a committee meeting with that, because there's going to be some decision points, like, like Attorney Rogers said, where there's some up or down, but it'll, it'll at least be the framework of the, the ordinance at that time.
Some multiple choice components.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Rogers? Even after discussing with Gil, there's still going to be multiple choice.
Well, I guess it depends what council wants. If, if we come to, not we, if, if the folks that are moving this forward, if council's happy with me drafting along those lines, happy to do it. Or if council wants me to come back with, here's option A, option B, option C, it makes no difference to me. I just want direction from somebody.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. If we're in agreement that Gil, as a spokesperson of some sort, could guide that draft, make sure that it's up to snuff, and then we can review it before we'd meet to approve it or not, so we have an opportunity to see it before we'd.
Yeah.
We could at least know what we're getting at. But multiple choice options, adjusting on the fly, I wouldn't want you to be subjected to that.
I, I would, I would add this to go along with your point, is I could, in the, in the, kind of go along with what we're talking about, and then in the cover memo, I would explain, here was the choice here, there, and on down the line, and if you, if you didn't like the choice, you can make a motion to amend it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, what Attorney Rogers just described is, is perfect. I think it's something we can see ahead of time, so it's not quite such rapid fire on the fly.